Good evening, I'd like to call this July twenty first meeting, Wauwash County Council session. If you please rise for a prayer followed by the pledge. Heavenly Father, we gather this evening just to express our gratitude of the many blessings you give us individually, especially upon our country. Hope us in the day to day, we may take this for granted, but help remind us of the true, um, true blessing that is to live here and, um, everything you've bestowed upon us. Help us this evening as we, um, discuss county's business to, um, not only give us wisdom and discernment, but perspective and balance as we try to, uh, side of the best path forward. Your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is changed, one nation, of your God. In the judicial, with liberty and justice for all.
I appreciate everybody in attendance this evening. Um, if it's your first time here, typically what we do is we'll work through the agenda items as we approach a topic you, um, you'd like to have input on. Uh, we'll have you raise your hand, state your name, uh, for the meeting minutes, uh, and then we'll proceed from there. Um, some of the topics will involve quite a bit of discussion, so, uh, for everybody's time, we appreciate it and keep your comments about two to three minutes, um, as we have discussion as well. Uh, if there's side conversations or you need to take a phone call, please just step out for those. Uh, the first item council we have before us is the review of meeting minutes from both the June sixteenth meeting as well as the June twenty third meeting with Mr. Bates. Are there any additions or corrections or motions?
Motion approved.
It's been moved by Dave to prove him as presented, is there a second? Second by Mr. Mize. Go ahead now, call for a vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, those abstaining, motion passes six to zero, which one today mean? The next item on the agenda is a discussion revote being around ordinance number twenty twenty five dash eighty five dash zero eight. Accounting wheel tax ordinance as well as an excise, vehicle excise tax. Uh, to lay some of the backdrop for this discussion. Previous over the years, council has not entertained wanting to pursue a wheel tax. It's not been something we've desired. Most recently, there's been some legislative changes and we can, um, there's other, some of the room and know these better than I, but previously we had been receiving between one to one and a half million in community crossings money. That program has changed. Uh, we use these funds, uh, in large part for matching for bridge and road repair projects. If you're here since saving for the ordinance, I would appreciate you staying through some of the additional preparation requests because you can see exactly how much bridges in Wauwash County cost us. We have approximately a hundred and fifty bridges we need to maintain. Unfortunately, a lot of them built in a similar timeframe, so they're deteriorating at a similar rate. Our goal is typically to try to repair one to two bridges a year. Again, that can be about one to two million per bridge. Income, without community crossings considered, our income we generate through Q bridge doesn't come close to, I mean, covers about half a bridge a year. And so we've been using cash balances to try to cover the shortfall. Uh, post COVID, the expense of bridges has escalated like everything else. Even when we have, uh, our highway superintendent Cole can speak to it later, we have contracts in place. We think we know the cost is going to be, but by the time we actually get to the project letting, we, we find out from the state, our share is significantly more. With that said, the new rules at State House is in order to retain, I would call it, the new program of one to one and a half million dollars. A county needs, in order to be eligible, needs to institute a wheel and excise tax. It's very unfortunate for us as council members because we feel like we're being blackmailed at this point to make a decision to either retain these funds because later on, as we discuss it, if we enact them at the minimum amounts, which I believe would be, if it passes, what would happen? The income generated from the wheel taxes is at the minimal amounts, is in the two hundred thousand dollar range. So again, you can see it, it is, doesn't hardly cover even the engineering or the soft costs for a bridge anymore, um, unfortunately. Our goal in our discussion is to keep in mind that we are trying to retain eligibility for this one and a half million that we previously got from the state, now they're tying more strings to it. So that said, I'm going to first open the floor to council members regarding this ordinance, and I'll open it to the general public. Any questions about this ordinance or comments, Dave, if you have something here?
Could I ask Cole to come up? He's kind of our expert on this, so to speak.
Yeah, so if there's any questions, um, Cole or I can try to address them.
Just to clarify one thing, it, it is no longer requirement for eligibility for community crossings. What the wheel tax makes you eligible for is a direct distribution, um, from what was the community crossings fund. And the estimates for that direct distribution to Wauwash County in the first year is somewhere between seven hundred thousand and one point five million. And that depends on how many counties adopt the wheel tax. We would still be eligible for a community crossings grant, but those caps have not been set. So we have no idea at this point in time whether, I mean, it could be five hundred thousand dollars or it could stay at the one and a half million dollars that it's presently at, but it's going to be much more competitive. And the only way to be assured of getting some funding is through the direct distribution that you're only eligible for with the wheel tax. I said, not advocating this, I'm not advocating for that, that's just, that's just the fact.
That's Indianapolis's way of saying that we're not forced into doing this, but essentially we are. What they're doing is they're taking, I'm going to use a simple numbers, a hundred dollars that they allocate to this in the past. They're now going to allocate ten dollars and the ninety dollars is through this direct distribution, right? So if we still want access to that ninety dollars, we have to implement a wheel tax. Uh, tonight, we're going to look at four million and twenty five thousand dollars for four projects, right? So without that million, million and a half, well, seven hundred thousand, two million and a half, our bridges are going to fall apart. So, I mean, it's Indianapolis has done a little carve out, oh, we're not making you do it, but they are making us do it. I mean, if we really want access to the real money, that's what we have to do. So, uh, but tonight, you guys came at the right time. Four million and twenty five thousand dollars is going to be additionally appropriated if we vote on it, uh, for bridge projects this year. It's, yeah.
Any comments or questions from council, Dave?
This money gets shared with the other incorporated entities within the county, right? Or not, our, our county wheel tax?
Yeah.
Oh, the wheel tax will, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Did you want to break down that? I mean, you touched on it. So the wheel tax implemented at the minimum level would generate a total of two hundred eighty two thousand. I knew their estimates from Purdue, I guess it should be reasonably accurate. Two hundred eighty two thousand, six hundred forty five dollars implemented at the minimum levels. Two million, fifty seven thousand, six hundred implemented at the maximum. Uh, the percentage is seventy, I think, and these are, I'm not going to go to the decimal points, but, um, seventy seven percent would go to the county, thirteen percent to the city, six and a half, or this to Manchester, around one to each of the three smaller or incorporated towns of Fountain Grove and Rock.
Any other further comments or questions from council this way?
So you say we, we don't know, we don't have any real hard numbers to, is there like a, is there like a deadline for doing this?
To be eligible for the distribution in twenty twenty six, the deadline is September first of this year.
So to even be considered for any amount of the ninety bucks, we have to pass this by September first?
Yeah.
And, and I can tell, so, I'm sorry.
No, it's without too much, you know, digging, it doesn't give us a whole lot of time to, to try anything else or look at anything else or other avenues or anything we might want to do, or, or, you know, if we, if the state doesn't really tell us, tell us how much we might get or anything, we just, we don't know, we're just blind, blind, they're going to say it.
And, and they heavily weighted that direct distribution for that first year as well. So the total money available for the direct distribution for the first year, the range they've given us, one hundred ninety to two hundred fifty four million. But for the following year, that direct distribution is cut in half. Uh, it goes from ninety to potentially one fifty four, and the following year then it increases a little bit back to one twenty three to one seventy three. So again, that, that first year range of the seven hundred thousand to one and a half, that is the, the greatest distribution you're going to get in the media future. Because like I said, they have not set, they have not set the community crossings. They said the cap for the money, amount of money that would be eligible at one hundred million dollars is all that will be available statewide for that program, but they haven't set the caps or eligibility, eligibility criteria at this time. They do, there's supposed to be a community crossings call this fall, but like I said again, they still haven't announced the cap or.
But right now, we're getting anywhere from, well, what Kyle said, a million to a million and a half from community crossings. You're saying year two, we might not even get, you know, what we usually get.
Direct distribution could not be that.
It could not, it could not be that.
Like I said, if most counties adopt, adopt the wheel tax, you'd be looking at a direct distribution of seven hundred thousand instead of one to one point five. And I said, that's not a range. The cap was one million dollars until I believe, um, the second call last year, I think they raised it to a one point five cap. So that, the one point five is a relatively new number. But I mean, you're looking at, yeah, potentially year two, um, the direct distribution could be as little as three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from these numbers.
Is this something that we get to large beginning that we can set back until the next year? Or does this all have to be spent?
No, it doesn't have to be spent. I think in my understanding at this point in time, it is just coming in as, it will come into the eleven seventy three fund as restricted, restricted. In the agents.
But my concern right now, I mean, what Matt was talking about, we're, we're getting ready to additionally appropriate four hundred or four, four, five million.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, we're still going to have to try to find money elsewhere. And year two, we're going to have to find a lot of those somewhere else.
Yeah.
And.
Or you don't do bridge sponsors, I mean, that's the reality.
Right.
And for the benefit of everybody that's here and watching, when a bridge gets inspected, what's the timeframe, and there's an issue with it, what's the timeframe for it to be fixed or closed?
If it's a critical finding, I believe it's thirty days.
So thirty, you say you have thirty days if you find a critical finding on a bridge?
Which today, I mean, enough, I mean, today though, we, I mean, we have had a critical find on any bridges. That's it. And Matt, I mean, for Kyle spoke to the bridges as a, uh, a lot of them were built at a certain time, which was also they had a certain type of construction at that time. They're continuing, they had three thousand concrete, concrete beam bridges. Um, and they found then that the, the concrete is previous, allows solvent to the cables that are pre-stressed and they're seeing failures. Like I said, I don't, also, I mean, there's something that's been discussed here for me several times. Again, at this point in time, I don't know that that situation is quite as dire as I was led to believe by some of the consultants. Um, it is a problem, uh, but these aren't, we're not talking closures here. I mean, the first step would be weight restrictions. So, I mean, if that, that's, that probably leads more to your question. Do we have any bridges at this point that are, you know, in imminent danger of having to be closed? Probably not. Weight rated, I mean, we, we have, um, I'm sorry, I didn't bring the numbers, but I mean, we have a, I mean, probably maybe around ten percent of our network is way restricted at this point in time. Which again, that they would push to start be looking at projects or anything that falls into that category. But again, that, I mean, they could be weight rated for another twenty years or five, could be five, could be twenty, could be longer.
So another point that I wanted to make is, you know, Matt's point, or what Kyle about putting this wheel tax in at the minimum. So that we qualify for these other things, and there's a couple of other things that it actually brings to the county, you have grant writing availability through region three A. But the state says that we're, they're not forcing us to do this, but really they are. And if we were to go all the way to the max, and then they come along and say, well, gee, all ninety two counties have a wheel tax now, we're going to do away with community crossings. Then what do we do? So by putting it in at the minimum, we still have some room. And I really liked Kyle's idea when we talked about this last month. This thing has a sunset on it. In, in three years, you know, if the streets, if the state is straightening their mess out, we can let this thing go away.
Okay, um, just to summarize the ordinance here, um, whereas in twenty twenty five, Indiana General Assembly through House Bill fourteen sixty one, um, amended Indiana Code eight twenty three dash thirty dash two to require local units to adopt the wheel tax under IC six dash three point five dash five in order to be eligible for distribution from the local road and bridge matching grant fund for eligible projects to repair local roads and bridges. This ordinance that we're discussing would become effective January first, twenty twenty six. Per the state rules, there's two classes of vehicles. You haven't read it all. Basically, your heavier weighted vehicles, so your semis, buses, heavier trucks would be five dollars per registration. And then your lighter weight vehicles, so your passenger cars, the typical vehicles you all drive, uh, would be seven dollars and fifty cents. As lastly, as Dave mentioned, the ordinance is in full force, but will automatically expire on December thirty first, twenty twenty eight. Um, and would require another affirmative vote by a local council at that time, um, to reinstate it. And the feeling here from council was since the state does seem to change the rules quite often as, um, new governors are elected or as the house changes, uh, we did not want to be locked into something, lock our citizens into something if it no longer became a requirement. And us as council members weren't here to automatically pull it back, um, at that time. So at this time, I'll open the floor, if anybody has a comment or question, please raise your hand, I'll. Have you state your name? Yes, ma'am.
Kristy Bowne, Hall of Row, Woodrow Park Treasures. Um, so this community crossing grant, are we as a town still able to, um, apply for this, or is it all going through the county and we have to come to you and ask for this?
My understanding this time is you'd still be eligible to apply for your community crossings grant. You would not be eligible for the direct distribution unless you institute your own.
Next question or comment?
If they would get a piece of the direct distribution, yeah.
A portion of the cap.
Yeah.
So we don't get, we don't get all the direct distribution?
Seventy, seventy seven percent is, seventy seven, what did you say, Cole?
Seventy seven.
Seventy seven percent.
Yes, sir, in front.
Where are we flushes? Is this, is this cats going upon our license plate, when we get our license plates?
Yes.
So it will be automatic, no matter what?
It will be, where I've seen in other counties, um, it's automatically a line item on there when you register, um, along with this state reg fee and a few of the others admin fees the state puts on there, yes. And then the, we have been told that it'll be collected when you plate your vehicle and then it'll be distributed to the county.
And this seven dollars and fifty cents or whatever is locked in. You're not going to come up eight months later and say, okay, we're going to have to move to fifteen dollars next year. Get next year.
Personally, as one council member, I hope it would stay at the minimum of seven fifty, yes. That said, there is a range there that it could go up inside, so to be honest, it could be very.
So you could come up to January and say, that's not enough, we need to add more.
We would, we would. Annual, it would be an annual, I believe, Mark France, our attorney can speak to, annually, we'd have to adjust that.
We can only change it one time a year. So if they instituted before September one this year, this is the rate for all of next year. If they change it next year, it wouldn't apply until twenty twenty seven.
But it would take all of us voting on that to change that, where we would.
It stays at seven dollars and fifty cents unless it is changed, it does not go up.
So it can't be changed just because, it has to have a vote from the council to change.
Right, so alluding to another type of tax, well paid property taxes, uh, it's not like there's an assessment going on behind the scenes as you, that you'll say, oh, now my registration goes up to fifteen dollars because they've come up with this assessment shortfall or assessment appraisal.
That's a property, that's, it's kind of screwed you, but hey, it is what it is. And then you said something about the other excise tax?
It, it's just more of a descriptive term depending on which type of vehicle. So some vehicles fall under an excise tax, some would fall under, um, a wheel tax. Has to do with the weight of the vehicle?
I have it figured out.
You know?
So passenger, passenger vehicles, trucks under eleven thousand pounds, motorcycles, uh, mopeds, trailers under nine thousand pounds, larger vehicle, the mini trucks, the rigs for counties, the minimum is seven dollars fifty cents and maximum is fifty. Um, and that's the excise tax, the wheel tax applies to larger vehicles, that's titled per T, semis, trailers over nine thousand pounds, trucks over eleven thousand pounds, buses, um, semis, trailers, uh, and the ranges are rising. The minimum is five dollars and the maximum is eighty dollars per unit under those, that category, and that's the difference. And you don't, no, no vehicles pay the cost for either, it's either, either, either the wheel tax or the excise tax.
And Chris, I, I just like to say, um, thank you for going with the bottom, putting it in that one. It's not, it's not pleasant for you guys, I know a lot of you want to do it, but your back's against the wall, so you have to do it. Thank you for going with the middle, you could have gone with this, this guy's moment, right?
Could have gone with eighty dollars, and I'm sure some communities will go in the middle because the argument could be said, stated that you are going to have an unfavorable opinion by enacting this no matter what. So you might as well try to get as much money as you can or go halfway, and that's not our council's goal here. It's just to do the bare minimum to qualify for the state funding.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Well, the sunset provision too is nice, I think, I mean, we're, we're trying to play some gamesmanship there because if, you know, in two years, if the state changes the requirement and then we, ours goes away and if we can still get the money, right, I mean, we'll have to be cognizant of what they're doing down there to see if that sunset can actually work or if we have to re-implement. But we just thought, I think maybe Dave suggested this, that, hey, let's do it for now and, and three years, see if we still have to do it, so.
Thank you, sir, yes.
Terry Brewer, I just wondered if it's, we're going with the minimum number, my number or something. Is there a reason why we have to have the higher numbers in there? If we're not going to go with a range this year, if we're doing seven fifty five, why do we have these other numbers in there saying it could go up to this? You're saying that it has to be voted on again in the future, something to happen, so that'd be a new ordinance that would be voted on?
Yes.
So why is it in this ordinance that it could be higher? Can we remove all that language, please?
The section just identifies what the state's, um, range is. So that's in that second paragraph, that's the state ranges, and then in the next page is where we're implementing our fees.
Yeah, so Attorney France or Attorney Mize, they've reviewed it. I believe the ordinance is stating whereas the state statute allows for this, whereas the county is selecting this, as I guess.
It, it's, it's just a recital to say, here's what we're doing and why it is. That was just to be thorough, to put that in there.
It repeats the law that exists.
Yeah, and then from other counties that I've seen, that's what most of them do, they just kind of recite, here are the ranges you could do, here's what we set it at.
So in a follow-up, what, what about area where it says in letters forty dollars, then parentheses eighty dollars? Why is there a discrepancy there? Three different numbers, and it does it again in other paragraphs of twenty five and fifty?
I'm sitting here, I forgot two classes. No, I forgot to update when I changed the ranges forty dollars and eighty, so that was just a romantic player, really.
So what should it be?
It should be eighty, the max, the max is eighty dollars, um, and I probably just copied that level. And fifty dollars, instead of forty and twenty five, which what they used to be, it's now forty and eighty. Or I'm sorry, eighty and fifty.
Yeah. I've noted those.
The words are incorrect.
Okay, I changed the dollar on some one.
I've noted those changes, thank you, Terry, appreciate that.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Teacher Michaela, where does the fuel tax go to Wauwash County? That we get taxed on all of our fuel rock here. Like, I know, um, a lot of people actually go out of the county to buy their fuel. So I just didn't know where that fuel tax that comes from did in Wauwash goes.
Before I, um, turn it over, I mean, I'll just go ahead and turn it over if I can comment, right?
I'm not, there's not a county fuel tax.
Correct, it's from, so, so when you fuel up, I believe there's a federal tax and then there's a state tax, which is fairly large in Indiana.
And there's sales tax.
So makes sense.
Yeah, Indiana does have a fairly large state fuel tax. That money all goes to the state and then at, at the state, there's a formula where they decide how much they're going to send back to actually Wauwash County government to pay for road repairs, chip and seal, and that sort of, um, there's two, majority of two funds, restricted and unrestricted. Voted viable.
The mark is, is higher?
No, no. The actual price you pay at the pump has, I mean, we have no, the, the tax.
It's not based upon taxes in Wauwash, it's.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know why, I was in Portland the other day, it was like thirty cents less, I don't know why, I don't know why. It's not a tax, it's not us, it's, I, I don't know, if you figure it out, let me know.
Yes, so just to restate, there's not a county fuel tax, there's a state fuel tax that goes to the state and then they decide how much to distribute each year, and it depends, um, I think those distributions would change like during COVID when there's certain less driving, they've collected less funds. Um, and so it's a variable amount we collect each year.
Is there a city tax on that?
No.
No.
I honestly don't know if it's allowable. Well, just, I've never, I haven't heard of this.
I don't understand how you can go to thirty miles around us and pay thirty cents less a gallon, but everybody knows if you come to Wauwash County, you're screwed because the gas is going to be thirty cents more a gallon, why?
Now, there was a period where it was cheaper in Wauwash County, like you'd go to Mary and her.
Back, back to the ordinance, other questions regarding the ordinance, but ordinance please. Or comments or concerns, yes, sir, in the back.
What, uh?
Could you state your name for this? Okay, thank you.
Well, we're just, I mean, we're all individuals, this is actually got like every vehicle, I know he had a little painful to the same one actually was, but we got all kinds of new vehicles on the roads now, and I mean, I don't know.
If it has a license plate, it's going to get a tax.
UTVs, I don't know.
They won't have one.
Because they, they're not allowed, you're not allowed a license.
They get a, they get a, not a license, but they get a, they do get a sticker, that's a local thing.
Dennis, I believe it's most vehicles, I mean, there'd be a few exceptions, like we're just discussing certain UTVs that get that are a bit special permitting, but.
Well, I see, yeah, I just seen this, seen this.
It's pretty much everything, so.
Say all these vehicles, I mean, do they get charged anything or, but just, I mean, they're, to be honest, they're not easy on roads. I get along with them, that's why.
They, they get license plates, I think I've seen license plates, if they get license plates, they're going to get a tax.
Are they required to get license plates or do they just get us?
I've seen them in other counties, that or some Wauwash.
I do, I, I do, I personally do not know the correct answer to that. But I can research it, take your name. Oh, but I can research it, take your name and find out.
Dennis, this, I mean, it's something that's not presently required. It's something that commissioners are a little.
What license plates are on these vehicles? Okay, so, so there you go.
Dennis, Dennis, um, he just, uh, our superintendent just made a comment. Can you repeat it?
Yeah, so I mean, the commissioner, I mean, obviously, they promised communities new to Walbash. And that is something commissioners and Mark are working on, on how they're going to address fees and registration of promised vehicles. The accurate.
Horse tax.
One of your horse tax.
Any other questions or comments at this point? Not, uh, council before us, we have ordinance number twenty twenty five dash eighty five dash zero eight. Enacting the county wheel tax, county vehicle excise tax. Is there any motions regarding this matter?
I'll take the, I'll link the motion.
It's been moved by Dave. Is there a second?
Or reluctantly seconded.
It's been seconded by Sam. Or I'll call for a vote. It's one last time for anybody to have any questions or comments. Yes, written back.
Lee Shepherd. Um, why exactly is it on trailers? Especially now since they offer lifetime and non-expiration plates? And what will the price be on those?
Depends on the weight of the trailer. Um, if it's less than eleven thousand pounds, it'd be seven dollars. I mean, at the minimum would be seven fifty. Maximum of fifty. If it's greater than nine thousand pounds, the range is from five dollars to eighty dollars.
I understand that, but like I said, they're now offering the non-expiration plate. Why are we even bothering the trailers anyway? It's gonna be a long time payment. It's gonna be done.
The way the statute, it was the way the state wrote the statute that you're gonna put it on here in the class classification of the vehicles to put it on. And the state allows us to do different rates for these different classifications. So we just put all the classifications that the statute requires at the minimum. I don't know how these lifetime plates will affect it, but you may pay it once and never have to pay it again.
Well, essentially, that's why, but maybe you're paying it once and then you're done. So. Why?
I will never say that the law makes sense. So that I can't, I can't explain why the state did it.
For the record, I made the motion, but I want to make one thing clear. I'm pretty sure there's nobody in this room that wants to do this. We don't have a choice. We gotta fix the roads and bridges and to clarify, this money can't be put in the general fund. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark. Can't be put in the general fund or anywhere else. It has to go over the limits and bridge.
What's been moved and seconded before us is council this evening. Um, no further comments or discussions. I'll go ahead and call for a vote. Uh, all those in favor of the ordinance that has been discussed, raise your right hand, please. Opposed. Ordinance passes six to one. Um, since it was not unanimous, there'll be a second reading of the ordinance. Um, so as a second debate for the ordinance at the next council meeting, which is August twentieth. Um, at that time, we'll re- preview this ordinance. Um, again, as previously mentioned, it has to be enacted by September first. Um, so if it fails at the August meeting.
August twenty first at five P M.
Okay, just to know for the record, it's five P M, same room. Um. Okay. Appreciate all the comments and questions.
Yeah, thank you all for coming. It's nice to see that you're, you're interested in our business.
Next on the agenda, while you might as well stay, uh, we have multiple additional appropriations requests. If you can kind of give a little bit of history on the bridge projects and what's going on.
Oh, it's first of, I mean, it's, we're here for additional appropriations. It wasn't budgeted because, I mean, at budget time last year, we were looking at using COVID money to pay for a lot of these items. We're gonna come from there and that's since been changed. Um, so that's why we're asking for additional appropriations for the items. Um, the amounts are so large because of, and I mean, post-COVID inflation. Um, so I can go through the individual bridge projects and give you an idea what those changes are. And I said for all these bridges are being built using a federal aid grant. Um, so at the time, and again, so Bridge six fifty two was applied for in December of twenty nineteen, uh, the original construction estimate was for two point three five million dollars. The state share of that was to be eighty percent of one point eight eight million, uh, with the county share of four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, the current estimate for that bridge is three point eight million dollars. Um, the state is still only committing one point eight million dollars, which leaves the county share for that bridge of one point nine two million dollars. An increase of one point four five million dollars to the county. Um, and for a conversation, so up until six months ago, the state had assured us they would participate in these increases at the eighty percent level. Around six months ago, they informed us that they would not. They also informed us that we, if we cancel the projects, we would be responsible for reimbursing the state for the development costs. Um, and then the bridge would not be eligible for federal aid in the future. Um, I had another conversation with them not today and they're saying that now their stance is their participation will be determined at letting. Um, and for Bridge six fifty two, that's the next month. Uh, I believe this August sixth or six fifty two. Uh. Second bridge is Bridge one forty three. Um, that project was applied for in December of twenty twenty. At that point in time, the estimated cost of that project was one point six eight million dollars. Um, one point three four to be paid by state, um, with federal monies and left a three point or three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars as the county portion. Um, the current estimate for that bridge is two point six seven million dollars. The state is continuing, their only commitment is one point three four, leaving the county with one point three three million dollars. Uh, the last bridge is applied for in December of twenty twenty one. Uh, the initial cost was two per, initial cost estimate was two point four million. Um, with the state pick up one point nine and a county share of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, the current estimate is two point nine nine million dollars. The state still committed to one point nine two. Leaving the county uh full over a million dollars. Um, so the total increase in the three projects um is just shy of three million dollars. An increase of responsibilities for the county, assuming the state does not participate. And like I said, obviously, these projects happen to be a lot, these are estimates. No real indication. It could be worse. It could be better depending on the bids that are received for the project.
So in case, um, those in back can hear part of that, uh, alluded to these bridges, we they were sought for funding and replacement four or five years ago, three to four to five years ago. Um. If we were at this point to back out of doing them, we have to repay the state, their cost incurred, and then they no longer qualify for any federal matching in the future. Um, so as a council, we knew that as um, decision to go ahead and continue to fund these ones that we had underway, even though there's substantial cost increase. But we are, um, fortunately gonna have to take a hard look at, um, very few bridge repairs until we can just pay as we go, um, cause our budget cannot sustain this kind of an increase, uh, that we aren't aware of ahead of time, as you know, so. So I'll go ahead and counsel. We have an additional appropriation request out of Edith for Bridge one forty three, as well as this, I'll take a moment here, Staverackman Drain Project, which is a repair project along with that. Do you want to share?
I was gonna say Cole knows what's going on here too, because it involves the road.
It's a county maintained area, open ditch that's now eroded into the roadway, uh, making it unsafe. And so it's a reconstruction of the edges and berms and. Moving the ditch over even. Okay. So we have an additional for eight hundred and fifty thousand for Bridge one forty three, um, construction on that line. The drainage project for a hundred and twenty five thousand. Uh. Since we're needed, I'll just stop there. Is there a motion regarding that matter?
Or some money.
Edith, cash balance. It's been moved by Mr. Mize. Is there a second?
There.
Second by Nick. No other comments or discussions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed. Motion passes six to one for the additional. Next, who are here? We'll go to Cume Bridge, Bridge six fifty two. This is the large additional for one point nine million that was discussed. Questions or comments here? Is there a motion regarding the matter?
Well, I think it's important that everyone understands that we're spending this to get that federal money and that state money. Right? I mean, we're spending one point nine million, but that's not the cost. I mean, bridges are unbelievably expensive. If, yeah, it's.
In that counter, I mean, again, when applied, our contribution was only supposed to be four hundred and seventy thousand dollars for that bridge now it's one point.
Is there a motion regarding the matter?
We can't back out of it, right? Cause we gotta pay all the engineering costs.
You have to pay soft costs back to the state and if no one are federally qualified.
I'm in the motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
By Dave, seconded by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Uh, call for a vote. All those in favor of the additional appropriation from the Cume Bridge for one point nine million, raise your right hand. Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, out of the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund eleven seventy six, an additional for Bridge one forty three construction. And then the old State Route fifteen construction engineering also.
So I can't speak, I mean, again, the bridge we've already discussed, the, the, the construction engineering is a significant portion that will be reimbursed. That's the total cost of the construction inspection on that. Um, and we should be reimbursed for eight percent of that, but we have to pay it. It's a reimbursable.
This is for one bridge.
No, that's for the, this is for the old fifteen repaving from Meridian Road to about.
Oh, yeah.
So while we have an additional before us for Fund eleven seventy six and total of nine hundred thousand, the hope is a large portion, thirty or forty percent of that can be.
Is that eighty percent? It's from the four hundred thousand? Hey, that's just from the, that's, yes, that's just the old State Route fifteen project. The construction number for Bridge one forty three has, has only depended upon letting.
Is there a motion regarding this additional?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved by Mr. Dillon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sam. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. I believe that's it. Thank you for your time, Paul. Next, we have an additional appropriation request of Cume Cap Development Fund eleven thirty eight. Um, the renovations of the old jail, two hundred and fifty thousand. Is the auditor, the commissioners, or Cheryl, wanna speak to this?
Well, this is the, the last of the council's portion that they had committed previously. Um, and the commissioners have, um, said they would take it out of Cume Development.
You say what?
They would ask word out of Cume Development instead of General Fund. And then, of course, the Health Center has their portion still to ask for.
Those, I was curious about that, cause I know we already said seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Terry project. We talked about that. Two hundred thousand was from the Health Department. And.
We, we budgeted two hundred and fifty already from General Fund.
Okay.
And that's been used um, from this year's budget. I gave you a list of what it was spent on in your packet.
Mm-hmm.
So then, um, this is the second to bring us up to five hundred and then the Health Department's gonna do this.
So when we approved that, we didn't really have an additional appropriation at that time.
We budgeted two fifty. This is the other half of it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to.
Been moved by Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gary. Any comments or questions? Been moved and seconded to approve the additional appropriation for Cume Cap Development for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, all those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Dave. Skip something. The auditor will bring me back on board here, but I believe we're to lit public safety, Sheriff. Thank you for your patience. Uh, Sheriff, if you could, um, just for the council's sake, uh, revisit the age the idea of us leasing vehicles and now outright purchases and the timeframe and and, and what's transpired on that, please?
Over the last several years, Marcy, now Shelley and I, we've worked on doing away that Mick and I told them that.
Do you have your radio on you?
No.
That better or more?
Um, over the last several years, we've worked towards doing away with our lease program and became pretty cumbersome and uh, the goal was to purchase several vehicles a year now, right? This year, we've stay back here. We've fallen a little short, uh, but in the meantime, we had a, one of our patrol vehicles was wrecked and totaled. And currently we have a Durango. Then I don't have the exact numbers on it, but thousands of dollars in repairs to the motor and it's currently at Walbash Valley Chrysler. And they are looking into it. So they said it'd be upwards of maybe ten thousand dollars for a vehicle that has over a hundred thousand miles. So our goal then with that same appropriation would be purchase a Durango and a truck. And sell the other Durango for what we could get out of the other truck is wrecked. Initially, insurance has paid us for it.
So to finish up the leases, there's a dollar amount there. Is that right?
There is, yeah, that number.
Twenty seven thousand four hundred and twenty six dollars.
For this year, yes, twenty seven thousand.
Four twenty six.
Four twenty six.
We have to round that.
Yes, I got that. And insurance reimbursement for the truck was twenty two thousand seven fifty seven. Left us a four thousand six hundred and sixty eight dollar difference. Uh, cost of a new truck is forty three thousand one hundred and sixty four dollars and fifty cents. Should be a total of forty seven eight thirty two sixty six. And since I've put that number together, we also added that Durango and at a very similar price to the truck of around forty three thousand. I don't have what the exact numbers with me, but it ultimately comes down to ninety one thousand three thirty two.
I would make a motion to additionally appropriate twenty seven thousand five hundred and take the rest of this under advisement until uh, budget heroes next month.
There's a motion before us, um. Seriously?
Just a verification, the twenty seventy five is already budgeted, right?
No.
No.
We need it.
Oh, okay.
So that's the complete lease.
The lease is this year.
I fully support moving to buying vehicles and getting away from leases.
Ryan, there's been some unforeseen circumstances that brought you here seriously correctly.
Right.
So one of these is simply a replacement vehicle for what you, what's been wrecked.
Correct.
And then.
The others with anticipation of this vehicle continuing to cost us more than we should be putting into it.
Okay, so council, we have three items here. They have the leased vehicle contracts. We, to satisfy those. to satisfy those, we have a vehicle that's been wrecked. Um, it's been under drivable. There has been an insurance settlement on that for approximately half the costs or so of what a new one would be. And then third, there's one in the shop that's not working that could cost upwards of ten thousand dollars for a hundred thousand dollars or plus vehicle.
A thousand, one?
Hundred, yes. Okay. Other questions for the sheriff? We have Dave's motion here also.
Like this is the, the reason I said that is there's two pool vehicles here that could replace those two vehicles until we get through the budget hearings. So that nobody's riding a scooter or borrowing a phone.
The budget, that budget, I mean, budget here, twenty twenty-six, right?
Twenty twenty-six. So they'd have to wait till January. They'd have to use a cool card, January. And did you bring another quote with you?
Yes.
Current cash balances. Uh, is the current count, cash balance of lit public safety, you got three point four million in it?
It does, but the next bond you're in. Alternate years, the bond payment comes out of there to the tune of about two point four million, so.
If we don't purchase anything, what, what Dave's saying and wait till twenty twenty-six, there's a good chance someone will be riding a scooter or a phone. Because when you have thirty-plus vehicles, one seems to be in the shop at all times.
Well, that would be.
And if we have no, if we have no pool vehicles.
You're using all of your pool vehicles.
Right now, we do have two pool vehicles, but at any given time, one or two of the guys are in pool vehicles because their vehicle is in the shop.
Just to be clear, I assume a pool vehicle is an extra one.
Yeah. Yeah, an extra vehicle.
And, and I, I get that. We, we do want to be frugal, but we want these guys to have the equipment needed. And I mean, you're in here because you're one of the officers wrecked their truck because of probably doing their job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I just don't want to leave these guys without the equipment, so I, I I, I think we, I, I think we just make the appropriate uh, additional appropriation for the ninety-one and get the equipment we need for these guys.
Now we bring up that we can't do that. We only have one quote and it's ninety-one thousand dollar appropriations. They have empty quote. Total fifty thousand. And then there's another ten thousand, and then there's another ten thousand for outfitting the vehicles. And I don't wanna, I don't want to leave them short either. I just want to look at the listings on the pools. It's like, you know, we're a month before the budget here in here. You know, uh, maybe till, till we buy one? I see the ones of twenty twenty-four and one, or one to twenty-five and one to twenty-six. Can we buy one? Did I get through the budget hearings?
That's like your all.
Well, they separate purchases. Individually, they're under the fifty thousand.
They're both from the same dealer.
Individual purchases.
I would hope that is individual purchases.
We do have a motion before us. Um, is there a second this evening?
That wasn't my motion. That was Dave's initial.
Correct, correct. Sorry, yes. Confirming Dave's motion is before us. Um, is there a second?
And, and there again, there's, and I want to get through the budget hearing next month. I mean, you can always come back.
Right.
I should take it under advisement until the budget hearings. I just want to make sure she's got the twenty-seven five to pay the leases till the end of the year. So whatever the correct wording is, well, let's see what kind of mess we're getting into here in August. You can always come back, right?
I have to, yes. Mr. Myers, yeah.
No, I'm good, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a different motion and the motion being to, uh, buy one vehicle instead of two. Allow the first of one vehicle to replace the one we had.
Okay.
Because I guess it was broke.
You know, it's still always two-sparits. Okay, if I will draw my motion, will you add the twenty-seven five to the purchase of the new vehicle?
Yes.
So I, I've noticed that I can mark the vehicles. One of them is forty-three thousand and the other one is forty-five thousand and then there's ten thousand to outfit it. Is that gonna cause us a problem with the state board of account? The separate, it's a separate purchase, but it's going on the same vehicle.
No, I should, should be most of the issues.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion when you can. Well, yours.
My second, that's.
And the dollar amount would be?
I believe the dollar amount is around seventy-one thousand dollars. Or no, it should be less, substantially less because it's maybe insurance.
Which field? That, that's.
Which one you want? The Ram? Because it's, they've been holding for me for several weeks. So probably we're built that.
And the difference between the Ram and the twenty-two thousand insurance settlement?
Uh, yeah, Ram is forty-three and one sixty-four fifty.
So approximately twenty-two thousand on the shortfall?
No.
Or the. There was a twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar insurance reimbursement.
Excellent.
So I think you're looking at forty-seven, eight thirty-two, sixty-six. Does that sound right? If you're looking at four thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight, uh, we, we round up uh, four thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars, right? On the insurance. And then forty-three, one sixty-four fifty for the cost of the truck. So.
What was the truck forty-three, what?
One sixty-four fifty.
Seventy dollars and five grand that I can work with.
That's seventy.
Seventy thousand, five ninety fifty.
Seventy-one thousand dollars. Is that another?
Let's end to, uh, for seventy-one thousand dollars. It's on two, right? That's on twenty thousand dollars less than what you're in. We're asking for, we're missing that, okay?
All right, and from my understanding, we, Donnie, you can also chime in. Total dues twenty-seven thousand, four twenty-five sixteen. That's what we have left.
For the leases.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, we got we had twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollar reimbursement, which left four thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixteen cents without rounding up. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. If you were to add forty-seven, eight thirty-two, sixty-six, no, forty-three thousand, one sixty-four fifty to that, you'd get forty-seven thousand, eight thirty-two, sixty-six. That would be the cost of the truck and what was left of our lease payment for the year, correct?
Yes, plus the lease money to the equipment.
That's all, that's on a different item here. What we're gonna do next.
So you believe the number is?
Forty-seven thousand, eight thirty-three.
Yeah.
Forty-eight thousand?
Forty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
Mr. Dillon, how's that?
Prove forty-eight thousand dollars for new vehicle.
It's been moved. I also forgot to second the.
I did.
It's been moved and seconded for a forty-eight thousand dollar additional appropriation out lit public safety for motor vehicles. Any comments or questions? Call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Posed. Motion passes seven to zero. Now Sheriff, we have two other additionals out lit public safety for supplies.
Let's, let's do the, uh, the ten thousand for the vehicle equipment and and not more or less not equipment, but funds to outfit the vehicle. All the equipment was taken out of the Ram after it was wrecked.
You still have ten thousand dollars in your account for outfitting the vehicle. You had fifty thousand in there and you only spent forty, so we probably don't need to do this appropriation.
Right, give that number, Sharon?
I, I believe you have that bunch left in there, but.
Perfect, moving on.
I'd have to like, Donnie?
Let us know at the August meeting if that doesn't. Then secondly, you have the photographic supply.
Yeah, this is, we're just short on funds for body cameras. We had purchased three body cameras. This is just a shortage of funds for that six thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
Any questions with Sheriff on this line item?
Not so much on this line item, but um, we'll get your report here for the canvas area. Do you have a, do you have a goal out there for that money or what you're spending on? I mean, did that pay for this six thousand?
Uh, uh, we're building it back up for equipment that's needed. Um, it took a pretty good hit when we moved into the new building. Um, some, some equipment that was gonna be purchased under the umbrella of the jail project that turns out was not. And so we're just building it back up and using it for standard items that we typically use it for. I said use it for all my contracts. It'll be expected for everything that I do and there will be no money in it.
Is it even, or is I allowed to even do that? I mean, it's, it's kind of, uh, advertised for one, one fund.
Well, let's, let's be clear, that's not true.
Well, I mean, but I, I need advertising for that. I'm sorry.
I can't do whatever. There is a list of things, the Indiana Code says what I can do outside of that. County Council will give me approval for it. Keep me out of the front page of the newspaper.
I'm glad you said that because I, I didn't know. I mean, I'm. You're sitting on the pile of cash that you know.
Sorry, tire fund, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
No.
Wa- wa- was it that way at one point? The, the sheriff was entitled to part of that?
No, that's, uh, that's all myth.
Okay.
If it was, there'd be way more than that. No, we use it for, we use it for a lot of equipment, but Indiana Code spells out what you can use it for, what you can't use it for.
He said this for body cameras.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve this six thousand dollars, six, six thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
It's been moved by Sam, seconded by Dave to approve the additional six thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars out lit public safety for um, photographic supplies. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven to zero.
Um, I was told
Next, we have the transfer rate.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a five-year.
The main interest in the deep rich.
Thank you, Sheriff.
If you want a hot seat, I guess.
Yeah, he's waited. So for Casa, we have a transfer request to increase travel mileage, decrease office supplies. Is there further comments on that?
It's just that coming out of the donations that I really haven't used this year, so it was used for for our conference travels, so that's why I'm transferring from one to the other.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The transfer is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you for. To Neil. Back to the board, we have Grove Wallace County with the updated tax abatement score sheet. In discussion.
Yes. Thank you all. I'll send to you also. There are two meetings ago with a tax abatement agreement. Since we've rescinded that one for customer agreements, um, we updated the scorecard. I haven't, I haven't updated in a while and I think that you will be happy to know that we made it with the modern development times where we did adjust the numbers um, and made it so we're looking at more quality projects. But still keeping in mind small business and making sure we're. Um, so before you have a memo, and so this is just informational, you know, the questions and give you information.
So counsel, most of us were emailed ahead of time, the full score sheet. And was it in our packets too? Or, I mean, it was on the email. What should be official score fund, hell?
And if I can, I'm just gonna back up just a little bit to talk about tax abatement and where and how those coming in in the process for that, just to, to talk about that. So when a company is looking at coming to Wabash County or expanding Wabash County, this is one of the only tools that we still have available as economic ability. Um, given the changes at the state level and then not having any incentives at this point for projects coming with Ash County. So a company looking at coming or standing here will fill out an application. Um, that comes to me, we will store it based on the score sheet and then run it through a calculator to seed.
Yep.
He has an extra copy of the score sheet.
All right, so fill out the application, we review it, run it through calculators and that's what the maximum amount they could get as a tax benefit on that. After that, we call an incentive review authority committee. And so that is appointments based on council commission makes those appointments and that's a advisory group that then vets the projects. So we meet with the company, vet the projects, look at the ratings and then they're gonna make a recommendation for the night of that. Once the incentive review authority gets done with the review, I get with Shirley to get on the agenda. I get with Mark France to get a contract or a declaratory resolution before you. And so you will see all tax statements twice. Um, I will bring forward the recommendation, but at the end of the day, you have full authority to deny or approve at that time. So you'll have a declaratory at one meeting. There'll be a couple of notes in between and then a few other temporary resolution after that. So you'll hear those projects twice. Um, at that point, if they are approved, um, that company then has to file paperwork on a time and a manner to the auditor. And then they have to do an annual compliance check, which is what you guys did earlier this year. And so on those compliance checks, they are saying they're reporting depending on if it's real property or personal property, they're reporting on those metrics and you can very quickly see if they are in compliance or not. Um, but that's how you continually approve it. And so tax abatements, what we do here, one year, ten years. We've done a lot of ten years from the past, but with the new criteria that I think that's gonna significantly knock it down to more three years, six years criteria. So I ran some of our old tax abatements through the new scorecard just to see where they would land. And so they were shorter periods. Which I think is generally what we want to see and what a lot of other counties have gone to or to. Not to say that you can't grant a ten year if you want to, but it would hopefully reduce that number. So does everyone have the scorecard in front of them? Did you guys sign it? Okay. So the changes to the scorecard, here, hopefully there's something color with us, is the red. Um, so what we did is we added multiple items that projects won't qualify and some of these are dictated by new state changes. So any company that has under two million dollars in personal property no longer qualifies for a tax payment, which is why we retract, retract customers because their personal property taxes are less than that, so we retract it. Um, next change we did was we changed the hourly rate. The minimum hourly rate is nineteen an hour. And the reason we did nineteen an hour is because that's a livable wage for one single adult. They have no family, that's a livable wage. So we started there. Um, the average wage in Wabash County is twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Um, so you can see the tiers of the points there. So we did add that in as an incentive review authority to make sure we're at exciting points all the way down this field there. But all those numbers shifted. So that's the only change to the front side. On the back side, we did add points in if the upper management is gonna live in Wabash County. We thought that was a good addition because that creates more stickiness for lack of better word. When your management, upper management live here, they're more likely to be invested. When your management, upper management live here, they're more likely to be invested here, they're more likely not to pick up and move away, so we did add some bonus points for that. Uh, we did note on the scorecard that if the equipment was previously used in Indiana and does not, um. And was used by that company or in arms length transaction, it's no longer available either. So that does not qualify. And, and then we upped the point ratio for the ten year, six year, three year, and then less than thirty points no longer. So. And the big changes are the wages, so that's starting at nineteen dollars an hour. And we up the minimum score and eligibility. In the point restrictions. And make sure I covered everything, yep, and then the investment tiers went up a little bit, so. Uh, they were previously, um, two hundred and fifty thousand and now it starts at seven hundred and fifty thousand. Which is more in line with what works the for both real and personal property combined. What questions do you have on me on that, or is there anything about the process I can explain any further?
Uh, you missed one of the changes highlighted, then Raphael Torm said. There was two points available, uh, one was for the chamber, if they joined the chamber of Congress. And I don't remember what the other one is, and now it says that. The, if the applicant can get two points if they join Grow Wauwah County.
They were separated, if they join economic development and they join the chamber, we have them.
Okay.
So we just combined them, sorry.
That's okay, but I, 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 I don't feel like. Grow Wauwah County should be. Awarding any points when you're a paid contractor for. The county, I feel like you ought to be neutral, I don't think you should be able to award.
And I was hearing this word originally scorecard was coming up, but I can imagine that they wanted the business community to be invested in the chamber.
And that's funny, but I, you're a paid contractor. That's receiving eighty five thousand dollars in tax money every year, and I don't feel like you should be able. You know, that organization should be able to, to sway this by two points one way or the other, I'd like to see that. Deleted, and I'd also like to see some points deleted, some kind of a formula. For if somebody just finishes a. Tax abatement. You know, the, the next year.
Period, yeah, the incentive.
A, a waiting period because. You know, council doesn't have a, a, a history of turning these things down, I mean, I know we can. But if the scorecard comes in and it's like, hey, you just came off of a six year. Whatever the amount was, I think there ought to be a point deduction for at least two, at least two years.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that up, we did talk about that at late veteran meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago. I think the consensus was that we want companies reinvesting in themselves, um, for example. County example that unfortunately is very recent is no bay. They haven't been reinvesting in their North Manchester location, so they moved to their local location that had recently reinvested. So they didn't want me to eliminate it, they still want it brought before the incentive review.
So the, I think the idea was that. We still have a say. Where, whereas if we put it in and grow August County's lab, then we don't really have a say. So there's. Are you talking about the claim dissection, or are you talking about? Then be able to ask again. To be able to ask again. I don't, I don't know about the points, I don't. Know if that's. I, I didn't feel that was relevant, but if there's. If there's company that's looking to re, reinvest capital. Like, I'd like to at least hear about it, cause it really, we can, we can say no. You know, like. I, I just, you know. I, I don't like to see the same companies coming back year after year after year, where it turns into corporate welfare or corporate life support. You know, and, and here's, here's one of the examples that was given to me. Duke Energy charges me two hundred dollars a month for, to provide electricity, and when their poles get thirty years old. They wanna turn around and put a surcharge on my electric bill for buying a new pole and putting up new wire. When they've been making the profits all year, I, you know, I, is it a fair comparison? I don't know, I'm not at least, I got into point deduction, I brought it up, cause I'd like to see it. But I really don't think that Grow Wauwah County should be awarding any points. They, they should, somebody shouldn't be getting points for joining that organization when we're already paying them, I, that just feels like a conflict. I, yeah, I don't. Either way on that, I. I, I didn't really consider that point.
And I think the original thought was there to try and reduce our tax. Dependence on local government to try and get the business community to invest in the business organization, but. We've also wondered that if they're a member of Manchester Live and not us or anyone else, so we could just change that too, if you want to keep it to. Invested in a community organization, it's a little more vague, but.
Yeah, it's up to the, the council, I mean, maybe, I mean, it's already. We're at your seven, I don't know, you guys wanna talk about it, or you wanna? Postpone it till next month?
And again, this is just informational, um, every time I bring a project before you, you have full authority to deny. Recommendation or not. And the project.
The scorecard goes as presented, where are the other? Not that we care what they've done, but where, where the other units had on them.
North Manchester hasn't approved it, and the city of Wauwah should have approved it. We did have some changes at Wauwah County in terms of review authority, so I'm gonna take that back. To city, North Manchester. We added more points in for the lower wages to make sure. That we were still offering tax abatements for smaller companies.
Did the council approve it or their committees?
The committees, yeah, yeah, cause they don't prove it until it's before. No, this is meant to be an advisory group that's just supposed to make tax abatements consistent. And that way it takes the burden off of you to say. You did this for this company, but you did this for another, so it makes it consistent.
I mean, I appreciate the, the quick response and getting the scorecard after. After Senate Bill One, but I.
We were in the process of updating it when Senate Bill One started happening, so I paused it for about six months.
Do you have a suggestion on? Uh, uh, your. Community organization?
Yeah, I mean, we can just say. Well, we can just list out all of the different business entities, the main street, or you're, you're a member of a main street. Or a chamber of commerce. That way they're just invested in. Back end of the community.
If I, if I kinda think about the pros and cons of, of what Dave was talking about, I. I don't, what, what do you guys charge? Is there, what's a membership?
They select, they want, the minimum would be three hundred.
So we're kinda like. Kind of asking them to.
It's a suggestion about being community minded, because two points is not likely to make or break the project.
Yeah, I don't want, you know, I, I kinda agree, I think I agree with Dave, let's, let's take that, cause we don't wanna say, hey, you gotta pay. So and so just to get.
I mean, allowing us to say no.
Yeah.
I like the idea of just some sort of whether we. Cause it's vague to say some sort of community entity. Where do you draw the line like?
Well, if we just eliminate those two points.
Because we added the five bonus points at the end anyway, for upper management. I think the original reason was to get them to buy in to the business community to make the business. Nonprofits less dependent, but.
I think it's, I think it's a good. It, it was a good thought, and, yeah, I'm not trying to cuckoo on it, but it's like a. It, it's like, we're, we're saying, hey, if you're gonna come to us and ask for a tax abatement, then you have to pay. Grow Wauwah County three hundred bucks to, to get this tax abatement. Anyway, necessarily, I don't feel real comfortable saying that. Makes sense.
And to your point, Neil, I like the, uh, upper management living in Wauwah County, having that being higher points, I think that's more important than. The two points for. We did, we did add points for the lower wages.
Yeah, that was a change.
So if, 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 if we take this out, it would, it could potentially be a wash for some folks.
We added five thirty one, so.
Yeah.
So do you wanna approve this tonight? Do we need to make a motion? So you're not looking to get it approved?
No, I don't need, we don't need.
Oh, you still gotta go back to the others.
Well, and it's an advisory group, so I need approval, the advisory group approves it, so the committee, Matt. You know, Shelley.
Mark France.
Mark France, yeah, Paul Mark. I staffed a few of these committees, so, yeah. So we'll take it back and then officially.
And in the meantime, you can also, on your city and North Manchester, let them know where the county's position is on that.
Yeah. Yeah, and so right now we would just be operating on your scorecard and theirs until they're, I mean, if they become consistent. And once another government party decided they want to change something.
Do the towns and the county wanna have the same score sheet? So there's not, so it's like, well, there's more advantage to go to the city rather than the county.
Typically, that is. So the companies are treated equal.
Well, what's always equal isn't always fair.
Well, thank you, any other question? Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next council, we have the Otters and Treasure Financial Reports, our packet. As well as the commissary fund. I'm always soil and water, had enough base. Does the Otters Office have anything additional for us this evening?
Oh, I have in your packet, the budget hearing schedule. So that you guys can remember from the coming. And so you can make arrangements to be here. And then. I did find out that. Our tax caps have not been released yet through the DLG up. They anticipate releasing them on July the thirty first. And when I went to my budget workshop, they did tell me our new tax cap would be. Six hundred and forty one thousand eight hundred. Last year it was three hundred eighty thousand, to give you an idea.
Repeat that, Shelley.
It's gonna be six hundred and forty one thousand eight hundred.
That's the, that's circuit breaking losses?
Yes.
The previous year it was three.
Three eighty. Now. That's what they told me during the workshop, but I don't have any documentation to that. They also worked on our max levy being estimated at. Six million two hundred sixty three thousand five hundred seventy seven.
There's nothing, and I've done a poor job this evening recognizing anybody on Skype, I apologize. Zoom, sorry. Is there anybody on Zoom that'd like to make a comment, or you probably previously didn't, I cut you off?
No one's unmuted.
Was there a motion for adjournment?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Uh, we had approved money for JCAP. And Tyler Ginnan was at the commissioner meeting this morning, Sheriff, I'm gonna put you on the spot, you asked him for. He said that the lady is taking training. And what was the other?
I, I think he said they were in the process of putting the program together, by, well, trying to get their classes planned and. And maybe replicating some of the other things that other counties were doing and had quite success. They were also, he told me afterwards that they were in the process of getting, um. Inmates kind of vetted for the program, that's what I wanna call it, so it's just kind of in that building process.
Job shadowing, uh, the lady that they hired, Maggie. Yeah, Melissa Campbell is job shadowing in some other counties, just to give you an update. And as you all know. This guy's leaving us. And I'd like to thank him for his service in a public setting. And wish him well in the future, and thank him for coming tonight, helping us with the, uh. Wheel tax. Uh, can we give a call, round of applause, please? Now, motion to.
Thank you, Dave. So we are adjourned.